Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being live streamed. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on; your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat; otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council, and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings, and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Lord Provost.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Machla.
Hi, I'm present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Saunders.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
I'm here, good evening.
Councillor Smith.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
That concludes the roll call, thank you.
Thank you. Arlene, Roger.
Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening: the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions? Is this agreed? Thank you. That's City Council. Good evening.
Thank you, Lord Provost. The next committee is the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee.
Evening, everybody. I'll go to Arlene to take us through this short agenda.
Thanks, convener. Item one: Declaration of Interest. Are there any declarations?
I can see no one raising their hand, so no declarations. Arlene, next item.
Item two: Response to Scottish Government Circular Economy and Route Map Consultation. This is for noting.
As Arlene has explained, the committee are asked to note our response, which was submitted to the Scottish Government on the fifteenth of March. The supplementary consultation was aiming to prioritise the actions that were identified in the earlier consultation in August two thousand and twenty-two. As you will see from the responses, we're essentially agreeing with all of the recommendations contained within the supplementary consultation, and we've provided irrational evidence to substantiate our views where required. Do committee members have any questions or seek any clarification at this point? Councillor Coleman.
Thank you, convener. I note the proposed response on page three in relation to question three, which rightly highlights that further radical and unfunded changes collection systems will be challenging to deliver, both in terms of costs and time scales. Can I ask officers if there has been any engagement from Scottish Government in terms of giving assurances regarding the funding of change to services, as I would have real concerns that the Scottish Government seeking changes to systems without local government being properly funded to meet the costs?
Thank you, Councillor Coleman. I could certainly attest to the fact that COSLA have been very involved throughout this consultation and negotiation with the Scottish Government, but I'm going to invite Mr Boyle to come in.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Councillor Coleman, for the question. There's been nothing forthcoming so far from the Scottish Government on this, but we're at an early stage of the consultation process, so hopefully that answers the question.
Councillor Coleman, you happy with that?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, at this point, none of this, we don't have enough details on costs to even begin to quantify that, but we will be on the case. So I assume that the committee are happy to note the responses submitted. Thank you. Can I go to Arlene?
Convener. Bailey McPherson has indicated he has a comment and a question.
Sorry, Bailey McPherson.
I do have a comment and a question, and I went to the trouble reading the substantive hundred and eight pages or whatever it is of the consultation document, slightly wading through treacle, but I had a particular question around, and the irony of it reads further actions to two thousand and thirty, in light of last week's announcement, there is a certain irony in that in terms of recycling targets. In that, it indicates, quote, "There will be a move away from involuntary approach to Scotland's household recycling charter towards a mandated approach to household waste collection services." I also read some of the comments of the Scottish Parliament's Net Zero Energy and Transport Committee in relation to this, and in particular, it said that, quote, "There is a lack of consistency," and in terms of recycling services, and it wanted to see a standardised approach with regard to bin collections. And I was just really wondering if, and presumably Mr Boyle, can clarify at this early stage, if there is an intention to try to standardise, if you like, bin colour and what goes in these bins right across Scotland, which I would view as really a bit of a hugely expensive diversion from what we're actually trying to seek to achieve, which is increased recycling across the country. I'm very conscious, you just walk across the border to Perthencamp, Ross and Angus, they collect the same stuff, they do it in different bins. Don't really think it matters whether the bin is burgundy or purple, frankly, but and my understanding is there was already a certain degree of consistency of what is actually collected. I remember in the very early days, those who have been on the council a little bit of time will recall, that in the pilot phases of recycling in Dundee, we had in the burgundy bin, you put glass, and the blue bin was a mixture of plastics, tins and paper and cart, and that was actually changed in an early iteration to conform with a charter across Scotland, and basically the burgundy one was changed to being for plastics and tins and so on. And I'm just really wondering if Mr Boyle could give us a little bit further information on his understanding of what that standardisation will actually mean in practice, because like Councillor Coleman, I have a real concern about the possibility of encumbrance upon local authorities that are really unfunded, and in the case of standardising things like bin colour, if, you know, a great deal of change was insisted upon, which actually would not necessarily increase recycling rates.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I mean, we're clear in this response that whilst the principle of a consistent approach across Scotland for recycling collections is welcomed, mandating for such an approach is not. So we've been clear on our view, but I'll bring in Mr Boyle to clarify the conversations that he's had on those issues.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I can reassure Bailey McPherson that there's currently no proposals to homogenise the system across all Scottish local authorities in terms of bin colour. There is, however, the proposal that all local authorities are compliant with the Waste Charter, which a number of local authorities are still not fully compliant. Dundee was one of the first authorities, it's like it was the first authority, to be fully compliant, so there's no work for us to be done in that particular regard. So hopefully that answers the question.
That's very helpful indeed, Mr Boyle, because I remember that we went through this sort of change very early in the stage of, you know, introducing household recycling, and it's good that that change was made at that time, because it avoids, frankly, additional expense in making further changes, particularly once we've rolled household recycling across a much wider area, because obviously the original change was done in the pilot phase. So I'm grateful to Mr Boyle for his reply.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I'm glad we clarified that. Arlene, we can go to the next item, please.
Okay, that takes us on to item three: Dundee Local Heat and Energy Efficiency Strategy. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
I'd just like to hope I've made everybody's evening by making sure that you had to read an incredibly detailed and extensive report. I'd just like to congratulate the Climate and Sustainability team for the huge amount of work they've undertaken over the last more than a year on preparing this document. We've essentially provided a baseline analysis of our entire building stock and detailed potential steps which could be undertaken to both increase energy efficiency and then decarbonise the heat source. It's an enormous amount of work that's been undertaken. The council is responsible for around two per cent of the city's emissions, but we are responsible for reporting on a hundred per cent and hitting our targets for two thousand and forty-five. So as you will see from this report, we analyse seventy-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six homes in our city, stating whether they're privately owned or rented, whether they're social housing stock. We identify that fifty-one per cent of our properties are privately owned, and fifty per cent of our stock is in flats. We've also detailed the over, you know, nearly three and a half thousand non-domestic buildings in the city, of which we only own four per cent. And the purpose of the strategy is to identify what interventions can be made to make all of those buildings more energy efficient, and then make the move from gas heating. At the moment, eighty-seven per cent of heating in the city comes from natural gas. So the strategy has created data zones which enable us to hone in in different areas with suggestions about what the best options would be. There's been a great deal of consultation, including with the Dundee Climate Leadership Group, who have submitted their responses to these plans and were consulted on this, and we've also identified five priority zones for district heating. The key point is that the strategy has been submitted, and there'll be a massive amount of work continued to enable us to deliver an action plan that we'll bring back to the committee in autumn, but I'm happy to take questions at this point. I can see that, Councillor Crichton.
Thank you, convener. I'm just looking at pages seventy-two and seventy-three, where it kind of shows poor energy efficiency areas, lots of it including my own West End Ward, but also the city centre and Baxter Park and Broadbury and Stobswell. The strategy rightly says that they're looking to prioritise for deep energy efficiencies to kind of retrofit measures, but given, as you rightly said, that a lot of the properties aren't actually in council-owned, they're tenants, they are renters, I'm just looking, my question's really to officers in the kind of funding landscape that we are currently in, how easy is it, or what is the reality for us to actually do this, given the reality and the cost for homeowners with the financial support that they will need to make these improvements? The convener, you're on mute.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
I'm just checking, Robin, do you wish to come in to respond to that, or shall I go just straight to Barbara?
No, convener, happy to answer that, and I think the answer in shorthand would be, it will be immensely challenging to achieve that. The historic townscape is something where they were not designed with energy efficiency in mind, the, you know, I think it's forty per cent plus of the city are tenements. They weren't designed with energy efficiency in mind, and obviously, members are very aware of the success of the council's EWI programme, the Fabric First Programme, and I think that is an intervention which is highly suited to more modern properties, but in terms of the traditional stone-built tenements, many of which are in conservation areas or listed, it really is limited in terms of our potential to do external wall insulation, and given the fragmented ownership of the tenements, unless there's a very high level of grant intervention, it will be difficult for us to enforce the migration to an improved energy efficiency standard. So I think this will be one where we need to work with Scottish Government colleagues to ensure that they are aware of the fairly unique circumstances in Dundee, and perhaps the other communities where tenemental stock dominates the domestic landscape, but I think it would be inappropriate for officers to give any assurance to committee that there is a known path to decarbonise the tenements. I think additionally, the decarbonisation of heat will also be challenging, because it's unlikely within tenements that at the present time district heating would be commercially viable because of the costs of retrofit, and similarly, air-source heat pumps would raise issues around noise, cost of insulation, and simply the size required to install perhaps ten air-source heat pumps to support ten different flats in a tenemental area. So significant challenges, and we need to continue working with Scottish Government colleagues to resolve them.
Thank you, Mr Presswood, and suffice to say, I'm completely aware, reading at this document a number of times, of the scale of the challenges we have. I think it's trying to realise that what we're trying to do is break it down into steps that we can take over a period of time, and then quantify the scale of investment required and argue for that scale of investment to be made. So really appreciate your point, it's a huge, a huge area of work to be undertaken. Can I bring in Councillor Alexander?
Thank you very much, convener. It was really to echo, I suppose, some of the comments in your introductory remarks in terms of the comprehensive nature of this report, so I think there is so much in terms of the wealth of detail, but also valuable information that will help inform other approaches when we're considering external wall insulation, when we're looking at new build programmes, and when we're looking at other aspects in terms of how we tackle poverty in its widest possible sense. We know that fuel poverty continues to be an issue, not helped by the cost of living crisis, et cetera, and the more that we can do to address some of those fundamental issues in terms of the fabric of residential properties in particular, the more benefit that our residents will derive from that, and particularly those that are most significantly challenged by the increasing costs of energy. I wanted to highlight a couple of things, I suppose, in the report in particular. One is the analysis and that breakdown across the city, which again, I think we shouldn't lose sight of how valuable that will be in other conversations. Let's not let this document merely gather dust, let's use it to inform the approach that we take. Secondly, it's also about recognising that there are some components that are already in place, so the Regional Performance Centre for Sport, Baldovee and the connection to MSIP, and of course, there's others that are likely to come on stream, I hope, such as those that are being progressed by the University of Aberdeen. And with every significant challenge comes an opportunity. I think the key thing is, we know the challenge, we know what we need to do, we know that for the most part, there is a significant amount of technology that can enable us to progress the ambitions in terms of what we want to do for heat efficiency, energy efficiency within those properties. The challenge comes down to finance, and not just public finance, unlocking private finance, because that is the only way that we're going to be able to significantly deliver on the needs that are identified within this report. So I think it's a really useful, valuable report, and I just wanted to commend the amount of work that's gone into pulling it together. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to say, there's a new climate intelligence service being set up through COSLA, and they were very, very complimentary of the work that Dundee has done. Believe it or not, we are out in the fast lane and leading the way, so we're identifying the scale of the problem, answering, you know, delivering on the problem is the next issue. So I'm asking for approval to note this report, but also approval to remit the executive director of city development, Robin Presswood, to establish an internal El Hees governance group to ensure that this work is closely monitored and that we're able to bring back a delivery plan and a local energy action plan in autumn. Are the committee willing to do that, to remit to Mr Presswood to set up that group? Okay, thank you very much. That's the business for our committee this evening.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Mr Menney, and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Can I have the first item, please, Arlene?
Yeah, thank you. Item one: Declaration of Interest. Are there any declarations?
Let's just give it a second. Councillor Skellon?
Hi, yes. Item four and ten, I am a member of the Board of the DCA.
Thank you. I think I'll also note for item ten, a non-financial declaration, as I have a child attending one of our schools. Do I have any others? Is that Councillor Malone and Councillor Anderson? Is that a similar declaration about being on the board?
Yeah, similar declaration, yeah.
Okay, that's noted, thank you very much. Next item, please, Arlene?
Okay. Item two: New Roads, Road Construction Consents, and this is for noting.
So this is, as Arlene just said, road construction consents approved in two thousand and twenty-three, noting them as required under the delegate powers within the standing orders. The revenue values noted include all aspects of managing and maintaining the infrastructure, including winter maintenance, street lighting electricity costs, gully cleansing and the lifecycle maintenance regime of infrastructure. Is there any questions on this item? No? Can that be agreed, then? Thank you. Next item, please, Arlene?
That takes us on to item three: Purchase of Bins and Containers, and this is for approval.
So this report seeks authorisation to purchase annual quantity of wheeled bins, euro containers, skips and specialist containers that will be required during two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Committee is asked to approve the purchase of these items through the Scotland Excel framework, and we believe we have Mr Hogg here if anyone has any questions on this item. Any questions? No? Can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please.
Item four: UK Shared Prosperity Fund Annual Report, December two thousand and twenty-two to March two thousand and twenty-four, and this is for noting.
So this report provides an update on the delivery of Dundee's UK Shared Prosperity Fund investment plan over the period two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-five. Over this period, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund has supported a diverse range of interventions across the fleet, the key themes of local business support, people and skills, and community and place. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convener. I have a question regarding the status of, I think it's just five of the projects. Obviously, as you'd expect, the things that were in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four.
Obviously, as you'd expect, the things that were in twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, they would either be now live or completed. But five are deemed to be planned. And I was just really wondering if we could have an explanation why they're all dated in the now former financial year of twenty three, twenty four. In fact, one reads spring holiday pop-up, which I presume was this Easter past. And I'm just really wondering if we could just have an update on why these are done as planned, when in fact the financial year that they are attached to, if you like, is now passed.
Thank you. I'll bring in Mr Hamilton to give some more details on that. Mr Hamilton, please.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. And I would have to check with colleagues just on the status of those five projects, but I'll provide Bailey McPherson with a written update. Those matters, there are some projects which are clearly in delivery, but certainly the one that was talking about spring should be complete by now. So I'll get back to Bailey McPherson on that one.
And that's absolutely fine. If you could just let me know for the five, exactly the status, that would be much appreciated, Mr Hamilton. Thank you.
That's very helpful. And maybe if you just put it around all elected members, just in case anyone has any further interest. Thank you. Any other questions on this item? No? Can that be agreed then? Thank you.
Item five, tenders received by head of design and property, this is for approval.
This item seeks approval to accept a total of eleven tenders with a combined expenditure in the region of two point two million for construction and infrastructure works across the city. And any questions on this item? No? Can this be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please.
Item six, winter forecasting procurement sourcing strategy, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
This item seeks approval for a procurement sourcing strategy and subsequent contract award for the provision of winter forecasting services utilised in the delivery of winter road maintenance services. Collaborate procurement's being led by Dundee City Council on behalf of seven local authorities in the north of Scotland. The proposed contract term is three years, which will coincide with the renewal date for the weather station operation and maintenance contract, allowing both contracts to be tendered under a single procurement exercise at renewal in twenty twenty seven. Any questions on this item? No? Can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Arlene?
Item seven, bus shelter repairs procurement sourcing strategy, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for procurement sourcing strategy and subsequent contract award for the provision of bus shelter repairs. The proposed contract term is three years with the option to extend annually for up to a further three years. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convener. Just to start off with a comment, I'm sure most of us, well, all of us frankly in the council will be disappointed at the amount of vandalism that recent months and the last year or two has seen to bus shelters throughout the city. Lots of smashed glass, you know, inconvenience to the public and a huge expense to the public purse, of course. Now, in terms of repairs, I do realise that the previous glaziers have gone out of the business and that accounts for the delay in putting matters right. But what I'm really getting around to is asking is before we go ahead and put back glass in each of these shelters that have been previously targeted at some cost, what assurances can we have that the same result simply isn't going to happen again? And on the back of that, how proactively have officers actually trialled alternatives to glass? Because obviously, the council's not made a money. So I'm just looking for some insight and reassurance here.
No, as you say, councillor Duncan, I totally agree with you about the frustration of the wasted cost of replacing these shelters due to pointless vandalism. I don't see what assurances offers can give, frankly, to make sure that doesn't happen again. But I'll bring in Mr McNaughton just to explain about the other issues you raised in terms of alternatives, et cetera. Mr McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. The council does have about, as noted in the report, ten percent of shelters already polycarbonate. And I believe we may actually have some mesh ones as well, a couple of mesh ones in the city. None of them are foolproof and they've all got disadvantages. First thing to note is the toughened glasses, toughened glass, and these, they are resistant to damage. What we're finding is that they're determined vandalism. So a lot of them have been smashed with hammers and tools and so forth with quite a lot of effort put in. Similarly, the polycarbonate panels which you put in, we put in a thickened urban type for the purpose that they are prone to vandalism, the sites that we're putting them in. There is a cost to that. The current cost is about double the price for polycarbonate conversions compared to the glass. And they're not vandal proof either. So they're susceptible to different forms of vandalism, particularly scratching, melting, and they can still be broken and cracked as well, smashed in if enough effort's been put in. The, one of the other issues with them as well is graffiti removals, a lot more difficult than it is on the glass and they turn opaque over time. And again, that is, does provide a screening which can be not desirable for vulnerable people using the bus shelters in addition to being unsightly. So often, that least have been replaced as well. So there isn't a perfect solution with any of these. And obviously, tackling the causes that make considerations of all forms of vandalism, not just bus shelter vandalism.
Thank you, Mr McNaughton. Does that answer your question, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of hear what Mr McNaughton says, that, you know, none of the alternatives are actually perfect. I mean, if we lived in an ideal world, there's certainly wouldn't be any vandalism. So I kind of take that point. But just with particular regard to four point two, it does talk about potential removal of a shelter where there's been repeated vandalism. And I'd really just like assurances from officers that, obviously, they can't stop the vandalism happening, but I'd like assurances that a bus shelter will not be removed in its entirety unless and until various alternatives have been at least trialled first.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly understandable, councillor Duncan. And I think that the issues that we're talking about here, the specific stops are once a real problem. We're not talking about a one-off incident. I think we're talking about a pattern over time. And it's addressing those complaints of people as to why you're doing something that's entirely pointless. But I'll just bring in Mr McNaughton once again.
Yeah, absolutely. I can give that assurance. We do value having bus stops. We want the reason why we've upgraded them previously and we continue to support them is because they are benefiting to supporting public transport and those using public transport. It's not our intention to remove provisions due to vandalism. And again, we would exhaust other alternatives first before we took that, any such decision.
No, that's great. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Much appreciated. That being said, can this item now be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please, Arlene?
That takes us on to item eight, parking meter procurement sourcing strategy, this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of procurement sourcing strategy for the provision of parking meter upgrade and maintenance services. The proposed contract term is five years and is selected in order to balance the cost of the year one upgrade work over the contract term. Following initial upgrade of the parking meters, which will include fitting new cash and car payment facilities, the supplier provided onsite maintenance and back office operation services for the remainder of the contract term. Following completion of procurement exercise, the tenders received will be reported back to future committee for approval. Have any questions on this item? Is it, Bill and Kirsten, is that a question for this item?
It is indeed. First of all, I would say I welcome the procurement strategy going forward. I've had discussions with Mr McNaughton about my concerns about, frankly, parking meters which have proved not to be very reliable of late and the challenge facing somebody turning up to a parking meter and finding it's not working. And do they go to the next one to see if it's working or do they try and use an app or whatever? So I think replacing our older parking meters is certainly to be welcomed because some are, quite frankly, rather elderly and a little bit past their sell-by date. My question really is around the whole procurement process, however, because I would like a lot of clarification about the position regarding the recommendation in item eight as opposed to the recommendation in item seven. And if I can explain what I mean. In item eight, it indicates that the cost is in the region of five hundred and fifty thousand pounds. And when a formal tender has been received, this will be brought back to committee for approval. Quite happy with that. In the case of item seven, however, it says for an award which is of a similar magnitude, four hundred and eighty thousand pounds, the award will not come back to committee for approval, but will be delegated to officers for that. And it strikes me as a little bit of inconsistency in there. I would prefer that things, you know, I'm not, you know, go over old ground in relation to my concerns around the need for transparency in relation to procurement. But I'm more comfortable with the thought of the recommendation coming back to committee rather than us just agreeing, as we did in item seven, to it just being, if you like, of, you know, delegated thereafter. And I was just really wondering, what's the difference between the parking meter one in relation to the recommendation as opposed to the bus shelter one?
Thanks for your comments, Bill and Kirsten. I definitely agree with and echo the earlier part that it's well overdue replacement of equipment. I think it's quite frustrating when you go to use things and then people are being sent around. So as you say, it's well overdue. But Mr McNaughton, can I bring you in to answer these questions?
Yeah, thank you, convener. There is, one's over five hundred thousand, the other one's under five hundred thousand, which is an arbitrary threshold value which we're using. Or maybe we refer to one of my colleagues in finance, just if they have anything further to add on that.
Thank you. Mr Thompson, please.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Just to confirm Mr McNaughton's understanding in terms of the threshold that we're utilising, is it that half a million pounds? But also to give members that wider assurance that we are looking at the overall limits as part of the ongoing review of the standing orders. And we will bring that back to members on further information in due course.
Okay, could I thank both Mr McNaughton and Mr Thompson for the replies? I suspected it was half a million pounds because one's four hundred and eighty thousand and one's just the other side of that. However, I think that's very high, if I'm being perfectly honest. I'm not suggesting that very small tenders should have to come back for approval. But I do think five hundred thousand's very high. I'm quite happy. I don't take it any further at this stage because in light of Mr Thompson's comments regarding matters being under review. But the message I would have is that I think five hundred thousand pounds is on the high side for that. And I think it's all about public transparency at the end of the day, so that actually elected councillors have made the final decision on the tender where it is of a relatively high nature. And I just feel half a million pounds is very much on the high side. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you, convener.
No, I think it's very useful to question these things and I welcome the scrutiny and the clear evidence that you care and have read the paper, Bailey McPherson. So thanks again for that. Do I have any other questions on this item? No, I'll take that as agreed then. Thank you very much. Next item, please, Arlene?
Thanks. Item nine, Dundee Christmas Village Sourcing Strategy, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report seeks approval for the procurement of a commercial operator to plan, deliver and manage a Christmas village in the city centre over the festive period. Through this approach, it's intended to enhance the Christmas experience in Dundee for residents and visitors alike and reinforce the city's reputation as a vibrant and culturally rich destination. And just before I bring in anyone for questions, I'd just like to note a personal thanks to officers because I know that we've got a small team that has put in a phenomenal amount of work to get this to the procurement stage and indeed to deliver this as they did last year. And they've done exactly what's been asked, which is to look at the art of the possible, given an additional investment of budget into this. And I think that what we've got here is the potential for a really great experience for people going forward. So again, my thanks for all the work's been done to get this to the procurement stage so far. I believe I've got councillor Scullin and then councillor Coleman, please. Councillor Scullin? I think councillor Scullin appears to be frozen, so maybe just take councillor Coleman first and then we'll come back to you.
Hi, sorry, it's working now. Is that okay?
Oh, right, okay. Please do.
Yeah, my camera's just gone off, sorry. So it's called A Christmas Village in the paper. Is that what the events team wants or is that just a broad term? And do you think that that term might narrow the field when it comes to tenders who might want to bring something completely different? Especially as a UNESCO city of design, it would be good to have something a bit different. And I've just got another quick question on that as well. What will the market research entail? And how long do they think that that will take? And how long will the selection process take on top of that?
Thank you for that. Hopefully, Mr Hamilton's got to note these questions. I mean, I would just note, first of all, that I think officers are being as non-prescripted as possible when it comes to this tender in order to get the best possible bid for the resources that we've put in. But Mr Hamilton, please.
Thank you, convener. I would echo your comments that the tender is trying to be reasonably broad but reflecting what we're trying to achieve within the city centre at Christmas. We do want to pay heed to the fact that Dundee is a city of design, that this village will be within the heart of the city at this key time of the year and to reflect the qualities that we want. So we're trying very hard not to limit the opportunity, but we do want something that is authentic to Dundee and of the quality that we're looking to achieve. In terms of the market research, we have in preparation for this report coming before committee tonight been talking to prospective operators of the Christmas market and Christmas village and trying to take heed from the learning from that exercise as well as looking around what other cities have done in their Christmas offer to ensure that what we provide in Dundee is competitive and compelling and reasons to visit Dundee. The tender will be offered, I think, for a period of four weeks when it's issued. Clearly, Christmas still is some time off, but we recognise that each week brings it ever closer. So there's a lot of work that we wish to do and obviously, this is a successful contractor will need to do to deliver the Christmas village and in readiness for switching the lights on and the activities on in November.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. Does that answer all your questions, councillor Scullin?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councillor Coleman now, please.
Thank you, Mr Convener. Indeed, Gregor, it is a while off, but it's two hundred and forty-seven days until Christmas. It's not that long. I know I'm not alone, though, in saying that recently, the Christmas offices in Dundee have not compared very well compared to other cities and feedback from I receive and not only constituents but citywide, I think most of our citizens agree with that. I know twenty twenty three was not helped with Winterfest pulling out, but for me, the lack of a civic Christmas tree in the city square, a much anticipated feature of Christmas in Dundee, has been sadly missing of late. So can I please have assurances for officers that every effort will be made to ensure the proposed Christmas village will have a civic Christmas tree as a key component and not just a disappointing tree at city churches? And can I also seek assurance that elected members will be kept updated, at least monthly, by officers on progress following contract award up until the delivery?
Thanks for your questions, councillor Coleman. Again, I don't want to load additional effort burdens onto officers when they're trying to deliver this. So I'm not sure about your latter request. What I would note is, as I said before, we've put additional resource into this, but the entire point of this is twofold. One is to have an experience that visitors and locals alike can enjoy, and two is to support footfall in the city centre. So all resource that we're putting into is to take account of both these factors. But Mr Hamilton, do you want to address these points as well?
Thank you, convener. I'm more than happy to keep members regularly updated with progress as the contract progresses and we get close to planning the Christmas activities. Members will recall that there was a separate sourcing strategy approved recently for the Christmas lights in the city centre. And we're working through that process concurrently with the offer for the Christmas village. I think the reality is that the city square is a heavily used part of the city and more so at the Christmas period. So we want to ensure that city square is attractive, it is appropriately dressed for the season. And there have been trees within the city square, albeit not the main tree in the city in the last couple of years. And we would expect that that will continue again with the Christmas village this year. But the planning at the moment remains that we will have the tree at the city churches but complemented by an attractive offering within city square.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. Does that answer all your questions, councillor Coleman?
Yeah, well, it does answer them, but I do think a traditional tree, as we've had before, we'd encourage footfall, play the photograph next to it. But we'll see where we go.
Thank you. Councillor McHugh, next, please.
Thank you. Actually, I thought Mr Hamilton just about answered my question in his last remarks, but I'll ask it anyway. In his previous comments, he referred to the Christmas village being in the heart of the city. Could you elaborate, please, on what that actually means? Where will it be?
Certainly, yeah. Councillor McHugh, the planning is that the main activity will be in and around city square. So not in Sletter Gardens, as was the case in previous years, but city square, that D area in front of city square and potentially in the High Street and Reform Street areas as well to ensure that it is right in the very heart of where shoppers and those who are visiting the city centre will be at that time of year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson, please, you've got a comment.
I think councillor Malone's in front of me.
Oh, my apologies. I've missed that. Councillor Malone.
Yeah, yeah, I've been missing for some time. Forgive me if I'm asking a question that's been answered elsewhere, but the, the document before us, to what extent will that have an impact on activities in district centres? You know, will it be a, will it make it more difficult for local communities in these areas to actually fund activities that are badly required? And certainly our experience in low key of, of the last event was, it was pretty dismal. And lots of residents commented on this. So does this, does this paper add to the analysis, add to the likelihood that funding will be centralized more and less will be provided for local communities? Thank you.
And thanks for the question, councillor Malone. And this is entirely distinct funding from the, from the festive fund that's continued to run. But maybe just bring in either Mr. Thompson or Mr. Hamilton to just address that as well. Mr. Hamilton, do you want to come in the first?
convenor, you're, you're correct that this report does nothing to alter the provision that's been available for communities across the city to bid for activities that they want to deliver within their area.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that, Gregor. As in, that's probably a bit of a grinch. I, I would not be the best person to come to when it talks about Christmas celebrations, but yeah. It's good if, if it's good for the city, it's good for us all. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Malone. And apologies again for missing you on the screen. And Bailey McPherson now, please.
Thanks. Just following up from councillor Coleman's comment about the traditional large civic tree, which for many, many years we've had in, in the city square or indeed on the boundary of the city square in the High Street in, 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 in previous times. And I think I just want to make the comment that the, the point Mr. Hamilton made about what was in terms of trees in city square last year isn't really, I think, what councillor Coleman was alluding to. It's the traditional large civic tree. If it cannot be, and I understand you're trying to deliver a lot of activity in a small space in the city square, but there is a large pedestrianised area in the High Street. I think our concern as a group is about what has been provided elsewhere in the city churches area, which is not really that close to where the other activity is at city square. And we would simply make the plea, and I'm not looking for, you know, to put Mr. Hamilton further on the spot tonight. We would simply make the plea that a large civic tree, it could be in the High Street to the, reach north of the city square, would, I think, be very well received by the Dundee public as opposed to what has been provided at the city churches, which, as I say, is some distance away.
Thank you for the comment, Bailey McPherson. I mean, I would note, referring back to councillor Scullin's comment about city design, that there is an intention to connect different elements of the design trees and the activities that will be in the city centre. So I think we'll be able to have something that's unique to Dundee and well received in the years going forward. So thank you for your comment. Councillor Short, please.
And thank you. Having gone through Christmas most of my son's life, where every penny is a prisoner, it's not always easy to do everything. And I think it's safe to say that the council are pretty much in that position. So basically, the, the request and the ask is, are we working with city partners with a view to, okay, so I can't buy the Christmas tree for your son, but maybe someone else can come in and support the Christmas tree? Effectively, what I'm saying is, are we making best use of those conversations that happen in the city? Again, I'm, I'm not old enough, but my mum tells me about the days when GL Wilson had their window, which was the, the talk of the town. And, you know, we, we see what they do down in Brody Ferry with Gillis's window. And we've not got the same kind of High Street there, but what we do have, Barenan Nine, but we've got a new owner of the Overgate perhaps. And that ability to have conversations with different people might open up to us having a slightly different offering if we get support from outside the council coffers.
Thanks for the comment, councillor Short. I think we'll, we'll take that on board. And obviously, officers will be working within the resource envelope that's provided. But I'm sure anything else that could come along will be more than welcomed. And I know that there would be conversations happening with people that are attending, just in terms of how the, the provision and how they can support as many people as possible to take part. But I'm not aware of any conversations regarding the additionality. I, I think at the moment it'd be concentrating on the current resource envelope, but anything else that could, could be brought in would of course be welcome. And Mr. Hamilton, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
convenor, just to, to echo that we, we will be working particularly through the city centre manager with various businesses throughout the city centre to try and ensure that all of the activity that happens is not delivered through the council's offices alone, that others do play a part that adds to what is happening in the city centre at that key time.
Yeah, thanks, Gregor, because it wasn't actually a comment, it was a question. So it's good to know that you are on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification and thanks for the answer, Mr. Hamilton. I see no further questions, so can this item be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Arlene.
Item ten, sourcing strategies by head of design and property. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of seven sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercise for each work stream. Are there any questions on this item? Oh, councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, convenor. Can I ask a bit more about wifi installations? And I note that in the proposals for primary and nursery schools, which are really welcome, but can I ask about the strategy for wifi installations at council-owned facilities? And specifically, I have a query about trying to get progress towards wifi at sheltered lounges, especially in my West End ward, Corso Street Lounge. I'd be grateful to know if there were similar strategy for wifi provision for our sheltered lounges across the city and to get the same schools, which is very welcome. And can I ask officers after tonight's meeting, because I obviously won't put them on the spot, but if they could update myself and councillor McPherson on wifi progress at the sheltered lounge on Corso Street that I've highlighted, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thanks for the questions, councillor Crichton. I don't know if Mr. Martin's on the call tonight, but Mr. Presswood, do you want to pick it up in the meantime?
Yeah, Chair, many thanks. Andrea Wilson, the chief architect, is here tonight representing Mr. Martin, who can't be here. Having said that, I'm not sure that Andrea can pick up the point about future plans for the sheltered housing complexes. Olga Clayton, who is the, the acting head of housing and construction, is on the call. So Olga, I'm not sure whether you have any knowledge of wifi in the sheltered lounges or whether it's a question that we need to simply revert to the elected members on.
Yes, and for, for members' information, we do have a programme of installing wifi. I'm not exactly sure where the Corso Street Shelter housing development fits into this, but obviously we'll find out and we'll report back.
Thank you. That's very helpful. My apologies, Andy. Do you have anything to add under the comments about wifi in schools?
No, no. Again, we can, we can speak to our housing colleagues and if there's anything that we can contribute to, any response on the sheltered housing, we can come back on them.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much. I'll just give it a second just to double check. There's any other questions on this item? I don't see any further questions. Can this be agreed then? Thank you very much. Next item, please, then, Arlene.
Thanks, convenor. That takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
Billy McPherson, you've indicated you've got questions on two of these items. So in that case, can I ask that members of the present public please leave the meeting at this point as we'll be going to the confidential section? Mr. Many, could you please advise when this is done?
Thank you, convenor. Given that this evening's meeting is being livestreamed, can I suggest that Bailey McPherson's questions are dealt with at the end of the city governance committee business? And in the meanwhile, I'll discuss with IT colleagues a way of ensuring that the present public will not be present during those confidential items of business.
Thank you, Mr. Many. That makes, sorry, Bailey McPherson, Bailey McPherson, sorry. And that's, that's very helpful, Mr. Many. And can I just quickly ask, are there any other questions on these items? I don't see any further then. And Bailey McPherson, if you could explain.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I, I agree with you. I think that's a very sensible approach in terms of ensuring the smooth running of the meeting. So I'm happy that that comes at the very end of tonight's business.
Okay, thank you very much. That being said, that's the end of the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, convenor. The final committee this evening is the city governance committee.
Good evening, everyone. Veronica, over to you.
Thank you, convenor. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
See that councillor Dawson, councillor Malone, I presume this is in relation to being both members of leisure and culture Dundee, so we'll take that as read.
Just to say councillor Short as well, convenor.
Thank you very much. Any others? Nope. Okay, Veronica.
Item two, Olympia. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Alexander.
It has indeed. If I can ask committee services to circulate the amendment and display on screen as appropriate, and I'll just talk to it as we go through. I think members are all very clear on why it's here and the nature of what I'm seeking from committee in terms of approval to undertake an independent investigation into the situation that we've faced over recent years in terms of the closure, partial closure of the Olympia facility. I think it's really important to say that, I think, we all recognise that this whole debacle has cast a very long shadow and I'm sure will continue to do so until the results of that investigation come back and provide us with hopefully the answers and the clarity that I think we're all looking for in terms of that investigation. I don't think there's a single member of the council that would say, you know, that they haven't been asking the relevant questions, seeking those assurances both privately and publicly over the recent months and years. And it's very clear, I think, to all of us that there are still further questions that require fundamental answers. And the only way we're going to provide that level of clarity, but also transparency in that process, is by seeking that independent review at this point. I think we've all watched and read and listened with some exacerbation at what we've seen more recently as well with the, I suppose, the, the reoccurrence of the partial closure of Olympia. And as things have continued to further develop and we've again sought to, sought those assurances in terms of what was being addressed within the Olympia, it's become clear, I think, to all of us that, again, for public reassurance, but also for our own reassurance, that the only way we were going to provide that was through this additional level of scrutiny through an independent investigation. Notwithstanding that point, I think it's really vitally important that as we seek hopefully on a unanimous basis that independent investigation into the Olympia's situation, the complete and partial closure, as I say, that it does provide the answers that we're all seeking. But notwithstanding those points, as I say, that they are given the ability to explore those issues as an independent investigator should. The motion, I think, allows us to identify not only a person that will then lead that investigation, but very clearly setting out that we expect ultimate transparency, robust analysis and swift findings coming back to the committee as soon as practically impossible, whilst also recognising that what we don't want is a Edinburgh tram inquiry going into the millions of pounds. So very clear around the inclusion of value to the public person, I think. Thank you to opposition members who have engaged constructively and sought those assurances as well. I think in keeping with other investigations, I've looked across the board at similar approaches. I've also referred back to the approach that was taken with FNA Dundee in terms of the cost escalation. I think this motion starts that process very clearly and hopefully provides the clarity that elected members seek and gives officers a clear steer on the level of expectation that we all have. With all of that said, I will come to any questions or comments, amendments. I see, Kevin, you want to come in, so I'll bring you in at this point.
We love an amendment that could be circulated as well. I feel that, and I have discussed that with yourself, I feel that your motion on this one doesn't go far enough. It doesn't even meet the strength of feeling that you made in the paper when you put a press release out to say that you're going to have an independent inquiry. I mean, I just feel that, you know, looking or, or trying to limit that look back at what happened within the recent closure, you know, is not wide enough. And we need to look back at some of the issues that has led for that closure and continued to, to plague the closure. Indeed, broken fasteners that were identified in two thousand and thirteen and still an issue in two thousand and twenty-four. I mean, out of, from the closure of, of recent, I think that officers have gave a reasonable account of where things are in, in private briefings that they've given. It has led me to the conclusion that we have a distinct lack of skill set in running this movement pool. And I think if we'd had that skill set at a much earlier stage, perhaps we wouldn't have been looking at the two, the six million that was spent. So I would be hoping that you could take forward these proposals in the good faith that they're meant. And it is really meant about trying to address the bad press that we've continually received for the closure of Olympia and look back at addressing the issues that have led it there and led to that huge amount of spend. And I think in the, in all these things brought together, hopefully there'll be a, a learning curve that prevents that happening again. Happy that officers come back with a wider arena and that they come back with a, a figure in mind and perhaps an individual in mind that could, that could lead that to conclusion. But there is certainly a number of things in relation to material where we've had, if we've had fasteners breaking from day one, there is clearly an issue around that material choice and why wasn't there a place before now? I think the questions that are asked, that have asked of that, people are, people have been around long enough to be able to answer these things fairly quickly. It shouldn't prolong an inquiry any great length of time, but it will give more clarity. So I'm hoping you could accept that.
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan. I'll come to councillor Shears next, Pete, and then I can see that Fraser wants to go on after the amendment. So Pete, over to you.
Thanks very much, Chair. I think Bailey Keenan has summed up the group's feelings quite well. I'm fully aware this will probably take up quite a amount of time, so I'll just offer a formal second.
Thanks very much, Pete. I think just to say, I think we're not, we're not disagreeing fundamentally. We're all agreeing that what we require is that independent scrutiny and investigation into the material issues that have resulted in the most recent closure. I think what I'm very clear on is not setting out, and I don't believe in setting out terms of reference by committee. There might well be twenty-nine different reference points I very much see as part of this investigation. And I suppose it's alluded to, but happy to call it out when it talks about not only the expert carrying out that investigation on behalf of the council will engage with leisure, culture, Dundee and other appropriate bodies. I think we are one of those bodies that will be engaged. I think it's implicit in hopefully what is written there, that elected members have to be reassured by the process and also help inform. There will be, I'm sure, hundreds of questions, not just those that are outlined in your amendment, Bailey Keenan. I know over and above those that you've referenced in that amendment, that I have probably, as I say, at least thirty more. But I don't think that's necessarily helpful at this stage to include them when we haven't actually identified an individual to take forward. And I would hope that early part of that engagement would be setting out our respective views on what the key parameters and key issues are. So rather than trying to set terms of reference by committee, I think it's really important that the first stage of this process is agreeing to the investigation, identifying an appropriate individual and thereafter giving that individual the space and the time to consider the important parts of what we've seen over recent years as well. So I think on that basis, I'm keen to, to continue to shine the focus on the, the broader approach that we're taking here. And so I would continue to move my motion on that basis. I'll, I'll come to councillor Anderson, who's intimated that she wants to second Heather.
Thank you, councillor Alexander. Just to say, I'm very happy to second this. We have certainly sat in group meetings and asked hundreds of questions over the last few months and expressed our frustration about what has been happening. So I think it's very important. So I think it's very important at this stage to be as open as possible and not try and prescribe or constrain what any independent expert wants to explore. So I think the key thing in here is to say that we have to bring in somebody independent who fully looks into this. They will obviously, as councillor Alexander said, speak to all the appropriate bodies, including the groups of councillors about what they want to see examined. So I'd like to support, to second the amendment as is.
Thanks very much. Bailey McPherson, you wanted to come in with a comment after the second, so I'll come to you next.
Yes, thanks, convener. I won't be supporting the Labour amendment because, really for the reasons that you alluded to. It's really about not constraining where the where the inquiry goes. Although I'm very sure that Bailey Keenan will have the opportunity to pose any questions that he or his group wish at the time the person is appointed. And I think we do really need to ensure that the person appointed has a focused view on a couple of areas. I mean, I think we all seem to have forgotten that there was an extensive discussion at scrutiny committee regarding not just this issue, but at the same time the roofs debacle as well. And between the two, we had over 900 pages of evidence. And for what it's worth, I came to a few conclusions from that. For example, about the wrong materials used during the build, the poor signing off of the original bill, the lack of an annual maintenance closure, inertia in the period between 2013 and 2020, between council leadership and diligent culture Dundee board to grasp the nettle and tackle the issues. We saw lots of emails going backwards and forwards, but frankly, the nettle was not grasped in terms of actually moving ahead. And frankly, there was a lack of transparency in that period. The first my group ever knew there was any issue at all at the Olympia was a group leaders' meeting shortly before the whole matter became, became public. And so I think it's vitally important, however, that we look forward in terms of ensuring that we have an Olympia that is fit for purpose going into the future. So I feel, and my group feel, that the inquiry should cover the following two areas. One, a detailed investigation to assure us that this facility is now fit for purpose in the future so that we have no further closures other than the annual maintenance closure, which has thankfully been agreed to going forward. Two, that we fully investigate that through this inquiry, that Dundee City Council and Leisure and Culture Dundee have between them the skill set in-house to manage the technical aspects of a complex facility going forward. And Bailey Keenan quite rightly mentioned skill set because if there is not the in-house, and this is largely a Dundee City Council rather than a leisure and culture Dundee who manage the the facility on a day-to-day basis, but in terms of the technical aspects, this is more a city, Dundee City Council aspect. And I think it's vitally important that arising out of any inquiry, we are, we are confident and the outcomes of that inquiry give us confidence that we have the skill set within the council to manage the facility going forward. Or if we do not, that we have the necessary contracts in place to ensure that that happens. What we need more than anything is a tight remit, and which is why we won't support the Labour amendment, a tight remit. And the point, and I've made this point throughout, if you have a tight remit, you ensure minimal cost of this inquiry to the public. Because you alluded to, convener, the potential cost of public inquiries. You mentioned Edinburgh trams, there's so many other ones where the costs have just run away with themselves. They may have started off with the best of intention. What we need here is a tight remit to ensure that we have, that we have the necessary assurance that going forward, we have a facility fit for purpose into the future and that we have the skill set to manage that facility going into the future. These are the two crucial areas. And for that reason, as I say, we feel we cannot support the Labour amendment, but we do hope that we can move forward on this in a fast manner and ensure that we have an Olympia going forward that will be open to the public at all times, other than the annual maintenance closure, and in whom the people of Dundee can have confidence. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much for those comments, Fraser. And that's certainly an ambition, I think, that we'd all share in terms of the approach going forward and looking for positive outcomes in the longer term. Bailey Scott, I'll come to you next.
Thank you, convener. Your motion says that there will be a rigorous investigation of the reasons for the closure following the 6.1 million repair to Olympia. But I think it needs to be a bit wider than that, and I might support the Labour Party's amendment because I do think they need to look at the design and construction of Olympia as well. Because the faults that have occurred since the 6.1 million refurbishment will be linked to any faults that might have been prior to that. And if you can assure me that that will be looked at, then I can support what you're putting forward. But otherwise, I'm going to have to support the Labour motion because I do think more needs to be done. Just at looking at current issues, it really needs to look at the design and the construction and everything that's resulted in the Olympia being closed for two years and costing 6.1 million to be repaired at that stage, as well as what's happened since then. And so if you can let me know whether that would be appropriate, convener, to be included.
Thanks, Bailey Scott. Just to come back and perhaps clarify a couple of points there. So I think we're all acutely aware, I suppose, that the reason that we're debating this and having an investigation is because of the recent closures. So it's very clear, in my view anyway, that we need to start from that point and then work our way back in terms of the recent issues. And I suppose I would also refer back to the point that Fraser McPherson referenced in terms of some of the due diligence, due diligence work, some of the paperwork, some of the, I suppose, internal investigation that's already been undertaken is another reference point. And the last line in there around such an investigation must consider and identify all of the key factors and issues that led to the closure, I think, gives me reassurance that the key issues are what we want to focus in on here. What I'm not looking for, I suppose, is, you know, a 20-year history lesson in what happened throughout every day of when we got to this process. We need to focus in and hone on honing on the key issues that led to the most recent closures because that is fundamentally the issue at play here in terms of that 6.1 million pounds of public money that's been invested to rectify those issues. So I don't, I don't know if that fundamentally addresses your point, Bailey Scott, but what I'm trying not to do is be too prescriptive whilst recognising that we need to be clear on our expectations and what that investigator is looking at. And for me, the investigator needs to come back with a clear understanding of what the contextual issues were, what caused the problems. Some of that may be some of the issues that you referenced, but I don't want to identify them for the investigator, I suppose, is fundamentally my point. I think it's really important that the investigator has the wealth of information at their disposal and they will decide which issues were most prevalent in the, resulting in the most recent closure. And if we're not going to give that degree of independence for that person to kind of to take the reins and lead that investigation in that way, then I think we'll probably start to unpick it. And as I say, I expect that all elected members through certainly group leaders will be able to input and to help, I suppose, illuminate some of the key issues because we may have different perspectives on what led to what issue when or who was party to those issues. And I think part of the investigation has to be able to unpick some of that and determine which ones were most relevant and which ones were actually irrelevant to the closure. So I don't know if that kind of answers your question, Derek. Hopefully it gives you some degree of assurance, but my expectation is that once we've identified that individual, then there'll be some early dialogue to give us again that clarity in terms of the approach taken and hopefully offer the assurance that we're all looking for, both those in this meeting and those out with.
Okay, convener. I think I'd like to have it spelled out in the motion in the way that the Labour Party have put it forward because I I do think it needs to be looked at prior to the 6.1 million investment and post 6.1 million investment. Because there's bound to be linking issues and I'd like to get right to the bottom of it. And I'm sure Dundee Public have made it quite clear that they want to know why the Olympia was closed for so long before these repairs were carried out as well. And I don't think the scrutiny committee ever really got to the, to the bottom of that. So I'd much prefer to see it encompassing the whole thing and not just post 6.1 million repairs.
Sorry, Derek, that's perhaps me rambling rather than getting to the point. The investigation has to identify the issues that led up to the 6.1 million pound of repairs. It's not post. So as far as I'm concerned, in terms of reading that first line, the investigation of the background that led to the recent closure. So we are looking over a period of years before the closure occurred. As far as I'm concerned, that's implicit in that line. And I'm saying that publicly on record right now as well. I think councillor McHugh, you are next.
Thank you. A comment. I just, in response to previous discussion, I'd just like to emphasise that Bailey Keenan's amendment doesn't seek to limit the scope of the investigation just to ensure that these important questions be included in any brief given to any investigator.
Thanks, Dorothy. No, and I took it in that vein. As I said, I have at least another 20 questions. I just don't think that what you do is when you're asking for an independent investigation, you don't send the terms of reference by committee because I'm sure each of us will have another 20 questions on top of these and you can see how that becomes unwieldy. So this is about stage one of that investigation. I'm not taking away from any of the comments or well-intentioned questions that have been asked. This isn't, I think, how you determine terms of reference for an independent investigation. So that's all I'll say on that. I'll come to councillor Tolan next.
Thank you. Yeah, just kind of really falling on from that point, actually, Dorothy. I think that for me, the problem with the amendment is that actually it does try to set some terms and it kind of almost tries to micromanage the investigation as it is. I think that we all, I think we'd all agree that we want a robust, we want an objective and we want an absolutely detailed, as detailed as we can, investigation into that. And I think the problem is, once we start kind of, this is what we want answered, this is what we want answered, this is what we want answered, we begin that kind of narrow definition of what that might mean. I think politically, it's not appropriate that we begin an investigation by setting those parameters. I'm also going to say I'm slightly concerned about section number six. Was there a complete breakdown in communication between Dundee City Council and Leisure and Dundee? It's, it's, it's very emotionally loaded language that actually probably would compromise, I think, the kind of looking into that area. What we want is an objective assessment. We want them to establish what happened where and when and why. I think that the problem with the kind of seven questions, and as everybody said, we've got about three million more that we probably want answered, but there is an element here is I don't think it's appropriate that we ask an independent investigator to kind of begin with the questions that we think they should begin with, rather than allowing them the space and the time and the objectivity to actually build a robust assessment. I'm pretty sure that all these questions will be, there'll be an opportunity for all these questions to be answered through that investigation, but to set those terms of reference at the very start, I'm not necessarily sure that's appropriate.
Yes, thanks very much. And then the last contribution is councillor Malone, and then we'll go to the photo.
Yeah.
George, you just snuck in. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, convener. Obviously, there's, there's a degree of kind of unanimity that we need an investigation, we need a robust investigation that looks at all the issues. My comments are really in response to Bailey McPherson, who seemed to think that it's all about, do we have the current skill set? And what's the future like going forward? I think that would be the wrong starting point. I think that would be an outcome, surely, that the independent investigator would want to come to themselves. So just as councillor Tolan said, we don't want to set requirements of the independent inquiry. I think councillor Keenan is right to raise a number of issues. I mean, I first raised concerns about the Olympia going back to my first term in office. And I think it was in the first year that I raised concerns about the Olympia and about maintenance. So I think we do have to go back because the people of Dundee, remember, it's not the people sitting around this table that have been paying for the cost of this, of this. I'm going, I don't want to use the word fiasco, but this problem, it's the people of Dundee. And we haven't even looked at the incumbent resource costs that we've had to kind of use budgets to underwrite some of the losses that have been made because this facility is closed. So I think there's a number of issues. I think councillor Keenan rightly identifies, and it may, there's nothing to stop in terms of the amendment of councillor Keenan, other questions to come forward. I think all he's trying to do in his amendment is to try and say there is more than the limit that we've set ourselves. We would like these considered as well. And I think that, I think his amendment goes some way of assisting that process, rather than, as councillor Tolan suggested, work against the process. At the end of the day, everybody, the people of Dundee will never forgive if we get this wrong. So I'm supporting councillor Keenan. I accept some of the reassurances you've given, John, but I just think that we need to make sure that these questions are embedded within the inquiry or else, you know, we might not get these, get an opportunity to raise these points again. I just think that there's no harm in putting that forward. It doesn't restrict the inquiry and I think there's a need to explain to the people of Dundee more robustly. And I think you've said it yourself, John. How did this happen? It didn't happen last year or the year before. It's been happening and ongoing for a number of years. And as I said, I raised, I think it was 2018, about maintenance issues at the Olympia. And I think we've got to be able to be able to, I think, I hope the investigation will provide us with the detail that we can be upfront with Dundee population and say, this is what went wrong. And it's about lessons learned, about how we go forward. But it's also about accepting the fact that there was an analysis that Dondonians, and every single one of us will come across it, that Dondonians don't feel is, has been appropriate in the past. And I think to give them the reassurances they're looking for, I think we have to have the inclusion of more detailed aspects. I think councillor Keenan's points do that. But in terms of Bailey McPherson, I think they were probably well-intentioned, but I just think that already we see the restriction of any potential query. And as for the costs of the inquiry, I understand that we don't have the money, the budget. But at the end of the day, what are we paying just now? What are the costs just now? What are the costs going forward as we seek to carry out the immediate repairs that are needed? So I think there's a degree of unanimity. I think we all want a robust inquiry, but I think councillor Keenan puts points on that require to be investigated. And I don't think that they actually do restrict the operation of that independent inquiry. So I'm happy to support councillor Keenan's amendment.
Thanks very much, Charlie. The only thing I'd say in response to one of the things you said is it's not just people out with this meeting that have contributed to the Olympia because as far as I'm aware, we're all Dundee residents who pay our council tax. So I think we're all equally as angry, not only as councillors, but as council taxpayers because that's what we are. So I wouldn't want that point to be lost either. And of course, customers as well, because I did enjoy taking my own boys to the Olympia and not having the family pool has been a source of contention in my house certainly. So I'll bring George in and then.
Can I just come back to, I accept your point, councillor Alexander, about the anger that's felt amongst the communities. And yes, we are all council taxpayers. Not all of us use the facilities of the Olympia, but all of us pay towards it. So that was the point I was making. And maybe you made it very poorly, but yeah, it goes beyond just the people who turn up to go swimming. But it's not just those individuals who are actually paying for the facility.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Charlie. I'll come. Perfect. Thanks, Charlie. I'll come to Georgia next. Georgia, councillor.
Obviously, I'd be supporting the Labour motion, but what I want to know is, will they be included in the terms of reference? And will we get a copy of the terms of reference when they come back to this committee?
Sorry, Georgia, I missed the first part. Can you, sorry, repeat what you said there?
Right, the first part was, I will be supporting the Labour motion. But what I want to know is, the terms of reference that our motion highlights, will they be included in the terms of reference? And will we get sight of the terms of reference back at this committee?
So two questions there. So the first question is, of course, all elected members will receive terms of reference. I expect that, as read, I think it would be a strange occurrence if those terms of reference and the person that's been identified to lead that investigation were not in the public domain and certainly not provided to all elected members. In terms of the terms of reference, what I've said a few times now is, I'm not setting the terms of reference on this call by committee. I think we need to wait until we've identifies the independent investigator to take that forward, because they will have their own views. And if we're not giving them the independence to take forward that investigation. So I'm not setting the parameters by committee. I would expect that some of those issues, I would expect, as I've said through conversation with elected members, would certainly come out. But it is up to the investigator to decide what issues were absolutely integral to the closure that we've seen and obviously the significant investment. Councillor Keenan, you've got a point of order.
If we have reassurance that the terms of reference will come back and be open for debate, then I'll withdraw that motion, because I'll bring it back then.
Well, first of all, that's, yeah, no, sorry, councillor Keenan, I'll come back. So first of all, that's not a point of order, but I'm happy to offer clarification. As I said, I don't think it's, and in my experience of any independent investigation or inquiry, it's not been set the terms of reference in very specific detail, as you're suggesting, by committee. So I wouldn't be expecting that, but I would expect conversations to move forward and engage with elected members to ensure those pertinent points are covered. And obviously, the reassurance hopefully provided by the independent investigator moving forward. So I think we've talked this through. We're all in broad agreement in terms of the need for this independent investigation to provide the answers, the clarity, and hopefully to move things on so that we ensure that this is never repeated and going forward as well. So with all of that said and all of the contributions, thank you very much. I'll go to the vote. Veronica.
The motion by councillor Alexander, the convener, and seconded by councillor Anderson, has previously been circulated and outlined by the convener. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Shears, has previously been circulated and outlined by Bailey Keenan. We'll go to the vote. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor El Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Billy Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
The motion.
Billy Sors.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolan.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Krickshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Coleman.
Motion.
Councillor Crichton.
Motion.
Councillor Duncan.
Motion.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that's nineteen for the motion and ten for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item.
Item number three, minutes of meeting, pension subcommittee and pension board. This is for noting.
Take silence as agreement. Okay, so thank you very much. We'll move on.
Item number four, minutes of meeting, personnel appointment, subcommittee. Again, this is for noting.
Okay, again, silence as agreement. Thank you very much. You for Monica.
Item five, capital expenditure monitoring, twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. This report is for noting.
Yep, as I say, every time we have this report, self-explanatory, so I'll go straight to questions. Bailey McPherson.
Yeah, thanks, convener. My question's about the information in paragraph six regarding the housing HRA position. And I note with a degree of concern, I have to say, the decrease of over five million, just over shade of higher than five million in terms of projected downturn for housing for the financial year just passed. And I suppose my fundamental question is about around officers' confidence about delivery of housing capital proposals. I have a specific question, however, and it's more specific, it's in relation to the site in Blackness Road, two one nine two four five, Blackness Road, that after a long debate and a lot of angst and consideration, we unanimously agreed to demolish the original flats in twenty twenty-one. The site has sat empty for some time, and I'm now told by the acting head of Housing and Construction that the funding bid to Scottish Government has been agreed, two million and twenty-nine thousand pounds less than the bid amount, which causes me grave concern about confidence about how on earth we will now get this built. And I would just really like some assurances in that regard and on the wider issue of delivery of the housing capital programme. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much for the question, Fraser. I'll perhaps go to Olga in the first instance to offer an insight into some of the variances that you've alluded to in terms of that five million, because I know there's, I suppose it's a mixed bag in terms of the various issues that we're contending with there. But Olga, can you offer a response and then perhaps also touch upon the issue of Blackness? Thanks.
Yes, thank you councillor Alexander. Without going into all the detail about the HRE capital programme, there were some significant variations. These relate to the EWI programme, a particular issue we're having in relation to contractual discussions with SSE OVO. We also had to reschedule some roofing work. That was a result of the fact that the storms that we had at the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four meant the significant draw on construction services resources, and we've now rescheduled that work for twenty-four, twenty-five. The lift contractor at the Hilltown Multis also informed us of the need to re-profile that work, and we are not able to do that work in-house ourselves. And there was also a change in our spend in relation to the acquisition of properties. As members are aware, we do buy off the shelf in order to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. And we buy these from developers. So there were three properties at Kirkton, which were delayed. And also, we were not able to move forward with the purchase of another eight properties at Rosebank. However, the three properties at Kirkton and the eight at Rosebank should be purchased in twenty-four, twenty-five. It's as well to say, we are currently in the process of reviewing the delivery of the twenty-four, twenty-five capital programme to take into account the carryforwards. In relation to Bailey McPherson's question about the development at Blackness Road, it's fair to say that we've encountered some challenges there. And we have carried out a review of a range of options in order to take this forward. And the report will be brought back to members in due course.
I could have just taken, I'm very grateful to Miss Clayton's helpful response. Understand the position, for example, regarding the purchases, the house purchases, the roofing work and so on. Hopefully, we'll see progress on that in twenty-four, twenty-five. With regard to Blackness Road, I'm grateful that a report will be coming forward. Could Miss Clayton give us some indications to the timescale of that? Because I'm now very conscious, we've now had, frankly, an empty site sitting there for three years. And I'd be really anxious to see this report being brought forward in early course, so we can have some confidence that we're going to be able to build the twenty-four affordable flats that we had hoped to build there as soon as is possible.
Thanks, Fraser. Olga, I don't know if you can offer any clarity or perhaps come back after the meeting if you require it.
I'm not able to order, offer specific dates for a specific committee. However, I assure you that we have been working hard on the options and we are close to concluding our conclusions and about what is viable.
Happy with that, Fraser?
Yeah, I'll just await to hear further. Obviously, I'd be very grateful if it was possible to get something to committee before the summer recess. It's just simply because obviously the whole thing's dragged on for some considerable time. Hardly if you're making, Olga, I fully understand. But it would be good to get something to commit before the summer recess if possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Fraser. Okay, no more questions on this item. Can I take this report as agreed?
Convener, I had a question.
Sorry, Kevin.
Yeah, sorry, it's in relation to this five million, because obviously last month we reported a two hundred and twenty-two thousand pound change within the capital plan. And this month, obviously a month on, reporting five million, which just seems an absolute enormous amount to suddenly discover over a month's period that you're no going to meet the spend on. Because you'd think we'd be planning things a bit better than that. So I'd like sort of some kind of explanation on that. And obviously note my disappointment that, you know, over two million of this is around, obviously trying to buy new houses. You know, I think that we don't have to necessarily buy new, we could be buying, you know, on the open market elsewhere. But it's really important that we get as many houses as we can, given the sort of heightened crisis that faces us at the moment. So, you know, I'm just wondering why in a month we find such a big, or we find five million. The auditors, if it went on a month, would have brought to our attention two hundred and fifty thousand. This is way, way beyond that. So why have we seen such a jump?
Thanks, Kevin. I'll come back to officers in a moment, but I asked very similar questions, just in terms of some of the outline information you're seeing there. So two point three four eight million is related to the increased supply of housing. So roughly half of the figure that we're talking about here is related to that. And within that, and you'll be conscious of the fact that we've just started a new financial year, that was related to slippage. So there was a delay in handover for three properties in Kirkton Road. There was another delay, which both were out with our control in terms of the handover of properties at Rosebank. So it's not the case that the money won't be spent, but it didn't conform to the financial year. And therefore, it'll come back through in terms of the reporting. But I don't want to pretend to be an officer, so Olga, I'll come back to you to add anything to those points.
Yes, obviously, we do place a lot of priority on the acquisition of properties in order to increase supply of housing. And we do consider where the acquisition of individual properties as well would be suitable, particularly where they adjoining existing council properties. So I'd just like to reassure Bailey Keenan that that is the case. However, the issue about the acquisitions, which makes up about half of this change, is absolutely beyond our control. There were contractual issues particularly, in relation to one site in particular, where the contractor was terminated by the lead developer, and that led to some delays. And for Kirkton, we had absolutely hoped that we'd get over the line in time, but they just didn't. But they will happen in the new financial year. There's a range of other issues. Obviously, the review of our progress in terms of the implementation of the Civica Integrated Housing Management System. And we are carrying out a review of the likely timescales attached to that as well. The lift contract in relation to Hilltown, I think the contractor had been optimistic that they'd be able to move forward and attract additional labour, but that didn't prove to be the case. And we have been carrying out a more rigorous overview of the housing capital plan. So I would hope that going forward and beyond, more than hope, that in future, we would not see changes at the level that are reported. However, it is the case that some of them were absolutely beyond our control.
Thanks, Olga. Kevin, you happy with that?
Yeah, fine.
Perfect, thanks very much. I don't think I've double-checked in here, so no other questions on this item. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Veronica.
Item number six, revenue monitoring, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, this report is for no voting.
Yep, again, self-explanatory, so I'll just go straight to questions. Councillor Crichton, Michael.
Thank you, convener. First of all, just to note, I think there's a typo for officers, just instead of no, none left behind. I presume it's no one left behind, but just for clarity for the end of the meeting. And my question is regards to page twenty-nine and the specific underspend. I just want to know why those two hundred and thirty-six thousand underspend on this key employability funding is it's vital that we have this in our city, and I don't understand why there's this kind of huge underspend.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'll perhaps come to Robin Presswood in the first instance. Robin?
Yeah, many thanks. I know, I can't give a specific answer to that, councillor Crichton, but I will give commitment obviously to get into the detail and come back to him and other members as required. One of the challenges with no-one-left-behind funding, as councillor Crichton said, it is immensely important. It is funded by Scottish Government, and it's a single integrated funding stream, which I think has enhanced employability by simplifying it. It does come in quarterly chunks, I think, from Scottish Government. And I think from memory, there was a delay in releasing some of the funding during two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. And that's meant that there has been a carryforward or an underspend at the end of the financial year. But I'll confirm the details and come back to members.
Thanks, Robyn. Are you happy with that, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Presswood.
Yeah, Bailey Keenan, Kevin, back to you. Sorry, Kevin, you're on mute.
Two questions. One in relation to the additional one point two million pounds spent on housing revenue. And wondering what have we managed to achieve for that? Have we reduced the number of voids? Have we brought down the waiting times for repairs? Because that again seems an enormous amount to spend within the one month. So hoping that we've achieved well of that. Another one in relation to the overspend on teachers. Knowing that in the budget, you cut thirty-odd teachers out. I'm just wondering if that additional that we've got at the moment's made a difference to closing the attainment gap? If we can hear that from the officers.
Okay, I'll come to Olga on the first point in terms of question in relation to the housing overspend. Olga?
Thank you councillor Alexander. So the majority of the overspend in the housing revenue account relates directly to construction services. When we budgeted at the beginning of twenty-three, twenty-four for the housing revenue account, the assumption was that there'd be approximately one thousand empty properties repaired. It looks like we're going to end the year with about thirteen hundred empty properties repaired, eaten into the backlog, hopefully. It's also the case that because we were using overtime to carry out this work latterly, and also because the condition of the properties was, in some cases, poorer than we may have expected, that the individual cost of each property was higher. So that led to an overspend of two point four million in relation to voids. However, I'm happy to report to the committee that in February, we reported a five hundred and forty-two empty council properties. As of today, that figure is four hundred and ninety. A further twenty will be left by the end of the week, and a further sixty-eight are also out in offer. So we are making good progress there. However, we are also concentrating on value for money. And I hope that answers your question.
That maybe opens another one up, but we'll come back to you on that separately.
Okay, thanks very much. And on the second question, I think we've got Paul on the call, Paul Thompson. Can you bring him in? Not Paul Thompson, sorry. What am I talking about? I'm getting my name smudged a lot. Apologies, Paul Fleman. I'm so used to reports in relation to finance going on Paul Thompson, Paul Fleman from Education.
No problem at all, convener. There was a finance element to that, so we're often confused. Thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question. A large part of our overspend.
A large part of our overspend is in relation to two aspects, the high levels of staff absence and just in relation to some aspects and changes around additional support needs. In response to that, we are undertaking, as we've referenced in the Children, Families and Communities Committee, a review of our ASN and inclusion agenda with a view to getting the most impact of all our attainment and learning from what we've done in some of our pilots. And that's why there's been an additional cost to help inform that ASN review. In relation to the attainment gap, we have a paper going to our next Children and Families Community on senior phase data after the latest national update at the end of February. And that will hopefully answer your questions around the closing of the attainment gap in the city. We will also have at in our Children and Families Community in June, we will have a report dedicated to the attainment and achievement of our young people with complex additional supports needs, which obviously evidences the impact of that additional spend and some of our pilot work across the city that will help inform the ASN review. So hopefully that answers your question. We're happy to provide further detail.
Thanks Paul. I think that was a fairly comprehensive reply. Kevin?
I'll wait on that information coming out.
Thanks very much. And also worth saying in terms of the budgetary position, that was, you know, children, family service budget wise increased by ten point one percent and a value of twenty million. So I don't think there can be any illusions as to the value that's going into that particular service because of its importance. But notwithstanding that point, I think that's all the questions. So can we take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Move on to the next report.
Item number seven, Common Good Fund Revenue Budget twenty twenty four, twenty five. This report is for your approval.
Again, go straight to questions. Kevslah Coleman, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Kavina. With regard to the promotion of the application process, I note that various ways this will be promoted as mentioned in paragraph two point four. But can I ask that there will be, sorry, but can I ask that there will be news releases to hopefully get this promoted in our well-read local press and on local radio stations? Also, I assume a network of community officers could be utilised to further promote amongst the community groups across the city.
Thanks very much, Daniel, in terms of your question. I think there's a number of ways the communications team seek to push out information. Some of that, of course, doesn't have a cost burden associated with it. So we only have to look at the fantastic work that they developed as a part of the cost of living initiatives to show how incredible those efforts are to communicate and get effective messages out. I'll perhaps come to Andrea in the first instance, just to seek a response to that. Andrea?
Yeah, we'll do whatever we can do to make sure as wide as a cohort of people in the city get access to this. We'll also link in with neighbourhood services to make sure that we use the local Facebook pages across each community as well. So there's a range of different actions we'll take. And I'm happy to speak to the comms manager about that.
Thanks very much. Daniel?
Thank you. That's fine. Thanks.
Okay, no other questions on this item. Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much.
Item number eight, British Sign Language Local Plan, twenty twenty four to twenty thirty. This report again is for your approval.
Again, think a fairly comprehensive document that you've got before you in terms of the approach from the council in terms of BSL for the period twenty four to twenty thirty, sorry, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty thirty. And obviously it includes reference to a number of those longer term strategies and how they're embedded across different aspects of council services. And of course, as part of that process of pulling this report together, there's been wide consultation and partnership work, including across the wider T side area. So is there any questions on the contents of this report? I'll come to Kevslah Elnappel.
I just wanted to make a brief comment. I meet with the quality officers every eight weeks and I just know a great deal of work that went into this report. And it's allowed officers to engage with and support Dundee's BSL community at a local level. And hopefully this plan will allow improved communication with any good local plan. It's important that the community affects the most know about it. So I was really pleased to see in the report that it will be transcribed into BSL video and then shared widely. So I really just wanted to thank the officers because I know it was a lot of work. But I think there was a lot of positivity in terms of actually engagement with the community as the process of writing the report came. But yeah, thank you so much for the piece of work. It's really, I think it's really impressive.
Thanks very much for those comments. Certainly wholeheartedly agree with that. I know these documents don't come together by magic and there's a lot of consultation. So worth putting that on record in terms of our thanks. So thank you for that. I see no other comments on this report. So can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Veronica.
Thank you. Item nine, a step change in positive destinations for young Dondonians. This report is for your approval.
So this report obviously asks members to approve a step change in positive destinations for young people in terms of that improvement plan. Because I think we're all acutely aware of the challenges that we face within the city. But there is, I think, a comprehensive and fairly solid foundation on which we're trying to build on in terms of looking at how we identify, how we support, how we track, how we monitor, and how we enable people to maximise the opportunities that might not ordinarily, you know, be directly in front of them. And I think it's really important to recognise both those challenges and the opportunity that comes through this report in not only acknowledging that, but developing clear strategies, clear proposals, which hopefully deliver real impact, lasting impact for some of those young people that we're talking about. So with all that said, I'll come to questions. Kevslar Duncan, Craig, over to you.
Yes, thanks, Kavina. Just first, I just like to say I was really actually impressed with the sheer detail in this report. Really good reports. And obviously with the improvement plan and hoping about, you know, improvements. Obviously, you know, Dundee, there are thirty two local authorities in Scotland. Dundee's got its own challenges. And I'm looking really at the table on page eight to four, where I think it puts it in a fairly stark view just how serious some of these challenges that we face in Dundee actually are. And I suppose my question to officers is really, and obviously bearing in mind that, you know, one local authority does not exactly compare to another. But nevertheless, throughout Scotland, there will be examples of best practice, things that we are getting right, that others copy, things that others are getting right that perhaps we could copy. I'm just, you know, looking for some input from officers, allowing lessons that we might perhaps learn useful way elsewhere and apply here.
Thanks Craig. It's a really good question. Obviously, there's a couple of examples of other local authorities in comparisons at the back of that document. But I'll bring in Robin in the first instance to offer a response.
Many thanks, Chair. And thank you to Kevslar Duncan for the very positive words, which I will pass on to the rest of the project review board, and particularly to the project manager that has worked with me. Benchmarking with other local authorities has been at the heart of this exercise. And I think there's no shame in what we call borrowing with pride, which is looking at best in class, trying to understand what they're doing that we haven't been able to do. And that means that we've borrowed, that we've worked both with other companies on our benchmark, other local authorities in our benchmark family group, and also local authorities that are not in our benchmark family group. Because we need to understand what best in class looks like, what most successful looks like, even if it's a community which is significantly less deprived from us. We were aware, for example, that Perth and Kinross have done good work in this field. So we reviewed that very thoroughly and took some of the ideas from that. And between the project manager and myself and other members of the review board, we've spoken to about seven different local authorities as part of this. So I think Kevslar Duncan is absolutely correct to emphasise the importance of benchmarking. And we will continue to do that as part of the implementation strategy, just to make sure that we are learning as part of a constant review process.
Thanks Robin. You happy with that, Craig?
That's great, Kavina. I mean, thanks very much, Mr. Presswood. I think we can all, you know, all obviously would want to see improvements for everyone in Dundee. So glad that, you know, you're open minded, as it were, to engage with others. Thanks.
Thanks very much for the question. Okay, there are no others on this item. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Veronica, back to you.
Thank you, Convenor. Item number ten, City Development Service Plan, Six Monthly Progress Report, twenty twenty three to twenty four. This report is for noting.
Obviously, this is a regular update report. You'll note that there's nineteen performance indicators where data is only available annually or is unavailable at this time, which complicates matters ever so slightly. But the full year performance will come back to committee in the autumn. So where there are no figures at present, or the figures are perhaps slightly outdated, then these will be updated in due course once those new figures come forward. Actions in the plan have due dates up until April twenty twenty eight. But already since the commencement of this version of the plan in twenty twenty three, twelve actions have been completed, which I think shows a very positive direction in terms of the focus to deliver on what those actions have been set out. So with all that said, again, I'll come to questions. Bailey McPherson, Fraser?
Thanks, Kavina. Very positive information in here, which is very good to see. I have a very specific question regarding information on page one hundred and forty four, and it's the bottom item, about increasing the number of primary pupils walking and cycling to school. I think something we all want to see continue to increase. Now, the outcome is all around the School Streets Programme. And that's fine in itself. These have obviously been rolled out to a number of primary schools across the city. But in my own West End ward, the four primary schools that are physically situated in the ward, none of them will be able to be included in the School Streets Programme for the very simple reason that you can't have an exclusion zone on a major route and a bus route, as it were. And my question is, and I fully understand that some of the some of the actions in relation to increasing the number of primary pupils walking and cycling to school may rest in cooperation with Children's and Family Service. I'm thinking, for example, of walking buses, for example, which and I commend Blackness Primary School, which has, with help from the Ancom Activity Centre, has got a very active walking bus going in the recent past, which is very much to be welcomed. But I was wondering what other actions, specifically in relation to city development, that can be taken? And I'm thinking particularly of the ongoing issue, which I'm sure we all encounter about safety outside schools. Because at the end of the day, we're wanting to encourage less drop off at schools and more walking to schools. And particularly for those schools where there will not be the possibility of, if you like, an exclusion zone of vehicles immediately before the start of school day and as the school day ends in the afternoon. It would be good to know what other actions city development can take to encourage more primary pupils walking and cycling to school in areas that will not have a School Streets Programme rolled out for their particular school.
Thanks for the question, Fraser. I can see Robin's taking himself off mute, but I know that Muen's also on the call. So Robin, I'll come to you first in case you want to offer a view.
Yeah, I think better if the head of Sustainable Transportation and Road comes in because he's been leading this work.
And Eun?
Yeah, thank you very much, Convenor. We're doing a number of both behavioural change and infrastructure improvements, behavioural change campaigns specifically designed for increasing active travel and schools features as part of that. There has been a recent change in the administration of Scottish Government behavioural change initiatives, things like the walking schools, bikeability and so forth as well. These will continue. But again, the shape of those is currently being reviewed at the moment for twenty twenty four, twenty five. And again, we'll be able to update further through factor around the regional transport partnerships that are now leading on that work on behalf of Transport Scotland to have a look at it specifically for the location. In terms of infrastructure, we're doing a number of things in addition to the School Streets Zone as well. So as reported previously, we undertake a number of junction upgrades, pedestrian crossings to improve crossing facilities, also some minor things. We've had a continuous programme of drop curb improvements to increase pedestrian flow, particularly for schools. As I say, we monitor the travel methods to school through the bio annual hands up survey, the next one's due out in May this year. So again, we'll be able to update our website on the figures from that. We're hoping for some positive modal shift change in that regard, that the majority of children do still walk to school when they're moving actively. So again, that's a primary focus for us, for moving people with improved crossing facilities, improved pedestrian facilities and so forth as well around schools.
Thanks, Eun. Fraser?
Yeah, I'm grateful for Miss McNaughton's reply. I should say, the working group that a number of us are on in these matters, I have raised, and I think with some positive feedback, the possibility of rerunning and refreshing the sort of don't park here outside zigzags and yellow lines right outside primary schools, indeed all schools for that matter. The local media, to the credit of the Evening Telegraph and Courier in the past, have been helpful in helping to send that message about, you know, safety immediately outside the school, the school itself, when children are going into and coming from school. And I would be very keen to see more promotion of that because that's the way you help to encourage more pupils to be able to, you know, walk safely to school. But I'm grateful to Mr. McNaughton for his reply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll come to Kevslar McKeen next. Dorothy?
Thank you. At four point four, the report tells us that the majority of performance indicators are meeting their targets at the half year point, and remedial action is being taken to address any areas of concern. And further on, at four point six, we have a highlight of significant progress. But there's no further information in the report about these areas of concern. So, you know, it's good to see where we're doing well, but it's important also to know where things are not delivering quite as we'd hoped. So I'd like to ask if future reports, as well as highlighting areas where we're doing well, could also give us details of any areas of concern?
Thanks, Dorothy. I think obviously within the detail that's provided within the plan and that comparison exercise, but I get your point. Eun, sorry, Robin?
Chair, thank you. I am happy to confirm that we will take that on board. I think it's a legitimate challenge and it is clearly an omission that we don't actually provide any text to explain how we're addressing those.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Kevslar Flynn, Mark?
I thought you were trying to say that there, John, I was never sure. I just followed on from Billy McPherson, actually, with regards to the School Streets and the safety of the kids in front of the schools, which is really a priority for the city when we start talking about kids going to school and making sure it's safe for them to do so. Can I maybe ask the officers, obviously they'll be doing a review of how the School Streets project is working and how it's actually been affected by possibly poor driving practice, et cetera. How are we going to be expecting a report on this in the coming months? And what partners are we working with? And are we working with them effectively to make sure these schemes work?
Okay, thanks for the question. Eun, I'll come to you first.
Yeah, thank you very much, Kavina. Thanks for the question, Kevslar Flynn. So we are regularly reviewing, we're doing joint exercises with Police Scotland. And part of that, we do measure the compliance rate. The compliance rate is improved compared to pre inception, but is still far out with what we would deem to be success. So there is a lot of improvement and that's common across all the schools, although there are variances in the compliance rates between where we have introduced School Streets Zones, but none of them are a hundred percent compliance. We'll be reporting that as part of the annual road safety report, which will be later this year, probably August or September. And again, that will provide it in the context of some of the other road safety initiatives that we're doing as well. The second part of the question, I've lost now, second, that was, it's work coming partners, Eun, I think you touched upon that with Police Scotland at the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
So again, just to reiterate on that, we do meet regularly with Police Scotland. We've also written to their chief superintendent as well, seeking greater support for the initiative for the enforcement part, which does rest with Police Scotland. But as I say, we are doing joint exercises with them. It's something that we're keen to expand on.
Okay, thank you for the question. Thank you for the reply. That's all the questions on this item. So can I take that as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Veronica.
So we now go to the final item on the agenda, item eleven, Supply of Equipment Independent Living Aids. This report is for your